It's just so.
And believe me, I gave that. Deep thought. I know, I know. Okay, are we ready?
You're ready.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna call the, uh, meeting, regular meeting of the Almont Village Council, October 7th, 2025. The order please stand to the political leaders.
All right. Political leaders, this is two five of the United States. And two thirty dollar commission stands one nation under cap individual. We're going to be just around.
Hold on.
President Dyke.
President.
President Pro Tim Stoffler.
President.
Councilmember Feldman.
President.
Councilmember Glasser.
President.
Councilmember Miller.
President.
Councilmember Powell.
President.
Councilmember Snyder.
President.
Do we have any additions or deletions to tonight's agenda as presented? If not, I would, uh, I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Um, motion by councilmember Feldman, supported by President Pro Tim Stoffler to approve the, um, regular agenda as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimous. Communications, the LaPierre County EMS report. Anybody have any questions regarding the LaPierre County EMS report? Being done, we'll move on to consent agenda. Regular meeting minutes, September 16th, 2025.
Uh, yes, it was under agenda item number two. Uh, there was just a, a final inclusion there for the very end. It was, um, President Dyke reminded the officers to review their bylaws to make sure they're followed. And at their first meeting, the Homecoming Committee needed to develop its, uh, 12-month meeting schedule of their first activities. And then there was one more. It was under number six, the recording of the warranty deed. You had it as, uh, councilman, uh, councilmember Schneider moved and councilmember Feldman seconded. It's the reverse.
Oh, I apologize for that.
Anybody else on meeting minutes? General fund. Major street fund, local street fund. Parks and Recreation Fund, Downtown Development Authority Fund, Sewer Fund, Water Fund.
Uh, just done the sewer fund real quick. So we were under budget on the chloride. Is that correct?
Eric.
Yeah, on the fair chlorates, yeah.
But as you know, we, your last meeting, you voted to spend some money. So I don't know if that's represented in this current budget. The update.
Question, you can answer.
Yep.
Okay. Hero Register Report. Other questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Support.
Motion by, um, President Pro Tim Stoffler, supported by councilmember Schneider to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimous. Now's the time for public comment or any agenda items. Do we have any public comment tonight on any existing agenda item? Being none, we will move on to regular agenda item number one, first reading ordinance number 209.
Mr. President, I can say, I know you, you discussed this ordinance at length at the last meeting. Uh, the chief, uh, basically created it for us as he reviewed the other ordinances. And I, if you have any questions, he's, he's here tonight to be able to answer those. And I assume everything you looked at last weekend has been corrected per your requests.
So does this make the consistency you wanted with the LaPierre and the township ordinances? So everything is?
Yes, sir.
Consensus on the first reading?
I, I have a question. Um, I'm, section seven is about the, the penalties. And so we just, we set it immediately at a fine of not more than 500. It's, it's a pretty broad range of just going straight to the maximum. But setting aside whatever the fine would be, I know manager Kerberson, you've mentioned before about working with, uh, with the village's attorney, trying to be able to make sure that we're going to be able to prosecute issues like that, actually be able to collect those, those fines, things of that nature, because we were having issues with that before. Where, where do we stand on that? Would we be actually able to collect on these fines if, if it were possible? And, you know, would we benefit from them? Is that going to actually be realistic or?
We end up going to the point of issuing a ticket. It would work just like in every, every other regular traffic or village citation. We could take you to court and force the payment.
Sure. And I just, I remember that there was a, I don't remember exactly what the details of the concern was before, but there was a concern. I remember you bringing that up and making sure that we were actually going to be able to proceed with that. I don't remember what the problem was. I'm just trying to make sure that it's no longer an issue if we're going to institute this.
As listed in, this is now we're adopting an ordinance that matches the county. And again, we'll be able to pursue it in court as we would a regular ticket.
Sure. Okay.
I don't see a problem.
So what, what do we intend to find to actually be? I mean, if, if, if somebody is guilty of a violation or an infraction of this ordinance, you know, we set it up a fine not to exceed 500. That's pretty much the maximum anyways. Is that where we would intend to start this at or?
Well, I, I think you're familiar with the OEO's process. And typically a each item has a hundred dollar infraction assigned to it unless it escalates. So in this case, it, it would likely start out at a hundred dollars. And then if there's another citation, it would double or, uh, after the third one, it would probably go to $500 to make, drive the point home.
That specified on the fee schedule? Is that specified on a fee schedule?
Um, I, it's not on a fee schedule. It's not a fee.
Oh, okay.
This is a, this is, so this is a civil penalty for a violation of an ordinance.
And it's always up to $500.
Right, that's the max. The only reason I'm putting it this way is I understand what you're getting at as to having a tiered system. Uh, I don't disagree with that. I just wonder if we shouldn't have our ordinance reflect the tiered system. That's what I'm more used to seeing in this ordinance where first infraction could be this, you know, for example, a hundred dollars, second, 300, third, 500. When we set it as not more than 500, like obviously it gives us a lot of flexibility in that situation. But, you know, if somebody gets their first violation and they're at 100 and somebody else gets their second, for example, and they're set to right to 500, it starts to become really questionable how we're enforcing it. And it can, I'm just wondering if we're, if we intend to use a tiered system, why not just say that and then make it very clear how it would work? Unless we want the flexibility, but that flexibility also comes with the position of, you know, people accusing you that this person got treated differently than this person. And I don't really like opening that door, so.
Well, if I may, you thinking of that. So, uh, someone gets a citation for parking across the sidewalk at the school or something that is, uh, not necessarily a major impact. But the next person runs into a car because they're out of control and damages a vehicle and/or crashes through a window, whatever. You would want to be more severe with your punishment in that case. And then if they wanted to, uh, argue over the level of punishment, that could be taken to court as well, you know? They could be pled, pled in front of the judge. And if they want to roll it back to 100, then, then so be it.
So how do we determine those, those fines as you described them currently?
Well, again, it would be in the hands of the enforcing officer because, um, just like the OEO, I saw a letter today that the fine was $275. There were four violations that ended up at that dollar amount. I couldn't exactly say why each, what each one was identified at, but her number to get the attention was $275.
Sure. And, you know, it's only in this instance where I'm thinking about if somebody is violating in this instance, you know, either, either, you know, if they were at excessive speeds or something else, you know, what, what is it that the violation is going to be that's going to lead us to needing to go to $500 on a first offense? That's what I guess I'm questioning is, is that. But also even in the hypotheticals that you just presented, right? If it's, you know, parking in front of the school, not that big of a deal. If it's somebody crashing into something, well, that's not just a violation of this ordinance. That's a violation of several other things, which gives up the, the officer who's handling the is, the issue to have a lot of different things that they could cite you with. So I guess in the context of just what violates just this ordinance, do we need to leave it so flexible all the way up to 500 or would a tiered system be better? And I was just looking for feedback from you, from chief, from council, what their thoughts were on that.
In regards to the penalties, we mirror the language for the county.
Agreed.
I could seek clarification on how the magistrate or judge, um, levies the fine because they would be the one that would be imposed. I could get that information to you prior to that.
So we, so we write the citation, but we don't, we don't accord what the price of the citation is.
Correct. But if the citation's issued, it goes in the, the subject goes to court over it.
Based off of what, based off of what the statute or ordinance you violated is.
Correct.
So what, we, we do set the standard now whether or not the magistrate or the district court judge is going to actually impose that total amount.
But the ordinance says up to 500, doesn't that give the judge the jurisdictional leeway to, to award it without us involving us?
Absolutely, yes. So let's say that we set one at 400, he could go in, the judge could easily knock it down to 150, go in. I've got a lot of flexibility.
And if it's judge's jurisdiction, I don't think we need a tiered system.
Whoa, hold on. So, but again, if we have a tiered system, okay, it takes it out of their jurisdiction to then reduce it beyond that. If we say first offense is, for example, 100, then it is 100. If we give him room from zero to 500, he can go anywhere in between.
So if we say 100, he's got to obey the 100.
Unless he finds that it was not violated. So judicial interpretation and then statutory interpretation in this situation, it's us setting what those levels are. It's up to, it's up to the judicial branch to then do an interpretation of whether or not that fine is truly needs to be imposed because was it actually violated or not? They determined an issue of guilt.
Let me give you another example, and I'll need the chiefs, um, to weigh in on this. If someone in a golf cart hits somebody, now, does it fall under this ordinance or would it fall under?
Golf carts aren't covered.
Or I'm sorry, an ORV hits somebody, uh, individual in public, is that, uh, fall under this ordinance or is there a different ordinance?
It would, well, it will fall under this ordinance, uh, depending on the severity. I mean, if it was causing death or alcohol involved or drugs involved.
So that, that again leads me to believe if you hit somebody with a golf cart or, uh, ORV, we're going to want to hit you with a significant fine. And correct me if I'm wrong, but I, let's say we wrote a $500 fine to someone who struck a, a person with a golf, um, ORV. They fight it and go to court saying, I shouldn't have received that harsh of a punishment. The judge can reduce it, but he would follow our, typically follow our line of, of pricing, let's say, because we found it, you know, severe and our officer would be there to testify.
They're going to consider the issues of guilt and innocence and then beyond that, the totality of circumstances. Sure, I agree. And I'm not really actually concerned about when it goes to court, the court reducing it. That's, you know, whatever they're going to do there. I'm more concerned about just the clarity that we present to the public, the clarity that we provide to our officers in those situations and just, you know, the, the transparency and the evenness of the application of it was really more my concern. I can understand a lot of the benefits of having the flexibility. It's just, there's pros and cons to it. So I just thought it was one of the only things that when I look at other ordinances similar to this, they have tiered systems. So there are ones that are just like this too. They give a lot of flexibility from zero all the way to the maximum. Just wanted some feedback on what the rest of the county thinks and what your thoughts were too.
Well, the fact that it's, it word for word mirroring the county just makes it, I mean, you don't, when you're on the side of the road giving a ticket, you don't decide how much it's going to be. You write the ticket, you don't even know most of the time what the fine is. If they want to fight it, they can go find out or they have to call the court to find out what the fine is going to be. So it's really not in the hands of the officer that's going to be giving the ticket. They just have to make the determination whether they're writing the ticket or not writing the ticket. And did they violate the ordinance or not violate the ordinance at that point in time? If they want to fight it, great. If they don't, that's up to them. Um, they can call court, find out. For me, it's because it's word for word, then there's no interpretations word for word what the township has. It's the same as anywhere else in the county. It's the same in the village. Uh, if they want, if somebody wants to argue whatever happens, then, okay, they can, they'll end up having this waterfall effect across the whole county, most likely.
I don't know about that, but let's put it this way. We, we just clarified, it will be in the hands of the officer to determine the amount of the fine in that situation because it's from zero to 500. If you consider it as the infraction and a violation of this ordinance, we have to decide what that penalty is when writing the ticket. Am I incorrect about that, chief? Because how are we going to determine what the fine is supposed to be?
Only that, that is correct, only if we set a fee schedule and put it in here.
Right, okay. So if we don't, we just say it's an infraction, we're leaving it entirely in the hands of the judge to decide what they want the fee to be.
Okay. All right. Which is what the county probably said is we don't want to have our officers out in the field.
Making the determination.
Making the determination because one officer is going to say one thing and another officer is going to say another thing. And do I know that person? Do I not? Just leave it up to the court, just write the ticket, let the court decide what it is.
So do we have any, any idea of what the estimate for costs for, for any signage or implementation of this is going to be? Or we're just going to adopt it and hope people know about it?
Well, there'll be a, uh, we will put it on the village website as well as the police department's website, uh, social media. And then I have spoke with DPW supervisor who would be ordering placement of signs. We just have to make sure we have the proper signage out. I don't know the total cost of it yet. I haven't determined where all the signs would go, but we'll co, cover them.
Okay.
North, south, east and west side.
All right.
Um, chief, do you know if that has to have, do we have to issue a traffic control order with that or no?
Once we place the signs, yes, I will have a new TCO.
I mean, I guess the only other thing I was thinking about while I was reading this is do we have any, do we have any concerns for, I, I realize this, this is designed to mirror the county, just since this is our opportunity to, to make any modifications to it if we, if we deem necessary. Do we want to consider any seasonal restrictions? That was the only other thing that kind of came to mind while I was reading this is that, you know, it could be dealt with differently, you know, in the middle of summer versus the middle of winter. Do we care about seasonal restrictions or just leave it as is?
Well, if you're asking my opinion, I would say we leave it as is.
Okay.
I'm not overly concerned.
Anyone else on council is either?
I'm getting ready to ask that question. Anybody else on council have any questions, concerns? Do we have consensus on the first reading? Tonight's agenda, do we have any public comment on any non-agenda items tonight? Any public comment on non-agenda items? Being none, open discussion, Homecoming Committee bylaws. So the Homecoming Committee had their inaugural meeting last week, um, here at the village hall. Um, they went through the bylaws and are requesting, um, several revisions to the current bylaws as it was written. So I'll invite them up to explain their changes to the bylaws that they're requesting.
Some of the, um, the way the bylaws are currently written, it's, would be almost impossible for us to even, anybody, not just us, but anybody to try to, uh, put on an event in a, in a timely fashion. So most of it's real good. I mean, there was just some issues that we would like to, uh, to have clarified there on, I will go page by page if that would be, you know, sort of hit the highlights there. Under the, uh, section two, currently it says the event shall be scheduled with flexibility to prevent conflicts with other major village events. Um, for the last 30 years, it's always been the second weekend in, in August, which is a full weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, and we would like to have, uh, that stated as such. It's worked and probably was before that, but, uh, I, it didn't have anything to do with the ones prior to, to that time. So, um, that's where we, that's what we'd like to see. Um, and that, that, uh, that page there is just.
Oh, can I just ask, why not have the flexibility? I mean, if we can keep that date, that makes sense, but what if we can't keep that date for, for example, because we have that West St. Clair construction project? The same reason why we didn't do it this year? We intended to have it this year.
It's, it's just like, I mean, we have the Homecoming Committee or the Homecoming is his, uh, but there's been three times since 1909 that it has not been there. And that was, uh, during World War II and the bicentennial and then during COVID. So, I mean, we, you know, that's what we'd like to schedule it, have it scheduled that time, but it, if there is some exception, then obviously we'd like to, you know, uh, for any reason like, you know, like this. I think we've got a, uh, anniversary coming up here sometime soon, um, for the village, right? It's the village.
It's the 200.
200, yeah. So, I mean, there, we bought, we would like to have it set because most of the time, 99% of the time, we would want it in August.
Why not, what your version and dollars, meaning set it at that date, but then include the language or as otherwise set by council to accommodate the other possible, you know, conflicts, the type of language? Why not? Because right now we have it set where it could be that date and it could also be a different date, given that there might be an issue. And what you're saying is we'll set it that way, it, because you're making it a shall, meaning we don't have a choice. If, if there is an issue, we'd be in violation of our own bylaws.
But you, you know, I mean, I, I wouldn't want it to make it where, if it was a conflict because I don't want another, another group come in and say, well, I want that date. You know, that's not, you know, if, if it's something, I'd like to set the date for them because lots of the things that we do for homecoming, you know, we have to notify folks, you know, six, seven, eight, nine months ahead of time to get on their calendar. So I, I just, you know, um, that we, it's worked this way, like I say, for years, uh, with that date. The second Saturday or the second weekend in August, it's worked that way for years. And I guess I'm really not out to, to change something like that. It's worked, so why not leave it that way?
Because we run into problems like we did in COVID, like we did this year.
And what, I mean, the problem is that we canceled it.
Right, because we were supposed to have a construction project that would have made it impossible, which then, you know, of no fault of our own, got delayed into the following year.
Well, I mean, it, it all depends on, I mean, it depends on what kind of homecoming you have, you know? I mean, uh, it, it doesn't necessarily, you know, always have to be the, the same type of thing all, all the time. So I, I, you know, I'm not in favor of, of, I'd like to tie that date up and have it our date if you want to have it something else there that it, that it, it could be, you know, uh, I mean, I, I guess we could have that, but I would like to have the second full weekend in August be the date that we choose.
But you know, what if, that, what I'm suggesting is just picking your brain on it is what if we said that the language you have on the second full weekend and then followed up with the phrase that was struck, but, but with flexibility to prevent other issues? It, it said it at that date, but leave the opening for council to reschedule it or change it if we run into a problem, so that way we're not in violation of our bylaws if we had a problem.
But here again, with other village events, I mean, it, uh, I just don't want another group to come up and now all of a sudden they, now we've got a village event that, uh, you know, takes precedent over our, our homecoming. We've been doing this for over a hundred years. You know, why, why are we, you know, we need to tie down a date.
Ken, I can add something, please. Um, in the past, and I did not graduate from Almont, but the Almont Homecoming also is school reunions, class reunions. And there's people out of state that actually plan their vacations if they, if they know that the homecoming. And there's actually been people asking, is there a homecoming this year? No, it's going to be next year. And they actually plan their family vacations to come back. And so that's another reason because the people who graduated from Almont, they know what homecoming stands for. The other thing about closing the roads, we have no reason to close the roads. It, it doesn't matter if you have construction or anything on the roads. Um, there's something going on throughout the town. It, it doesn't just affect downtown. Thanks.
Still doesn't.
Yeah.
It still doesn't usurp what Stephen's saying because if something does occur that.
What if there was something in there?
We're not, we're not saying another major event's going to come in and steal your day. What we're saying is if there's something within the village going on that is like the road construction project, we don't know what effect that will have.
Well, why not leave that up to, let's put some, if you want to do that, let's put some language in there that it's up to the, the committee to, uh, adjust the date if necessary.
No, no. Because, because, because. That's, that's.
Because the event, in the event that it was occurring, that it was affecting the village, the village council is the ruling government body.
If the, if the village council is going to, you know, have ruling that's going to set the date, then why are we even involved?
We don't plan the entire thing just because we approve when it happens, similar to the Heritage Fest. We have to approve the road closure and the date and the map, but we don't plan the entire thing. We just have a minimal amount of oversight as to a few key details, but the majority of the planning, how it's funded, who the sponsorships are, what the events are, where they take place, is majority not up to us. We just get final approval on a few key details.
Let's go, let's continue on if you'd like, because if we're going to, you know, if there's, there's, if we're debating this one, then I'm sure there's some other ones that you're, um, have, have the same feeling on then. And this may not even, this may be for naught. So that's, that's page one. That's the only one that, that we had made some changes on on page one that I remember anyway. Um, page two, under the, the membership, um, it's pretty much just reworded some of that because there was two spots there where, um, it talked about vacancies. Uh, one filled by the appointment by the village council and the other one was, um, was contingent of, or the, was by the committee and then with contingent with village council. So I just made those two the same that, you know, it's, the committee makes a recommendation and the village council, you know, has to approve it. So that either member, new membership or filling a, a vacancy, um, is, is all the same in there.
That one makes total sense. Well, that's fine, you know, that, that does clean it up. Would you, would you turn C into F or whatever by doing it that way?
Yeah.
Um, that makes sense. It's the one right before that, E. Uh, I have an. I have an issue with only, so you said any officer or member, and you changed it to just officer?
Yes.
Just so we're clear, there is now no mechanism for the removal of a member. You removed the only mechanism for.
Well, that's if they violate OMA. Members can't violate OMA, because they're not the ones that are, would be responsible for, you know, setting meeting dates and so on and so forth. That's what, I mean, Open Meetings Act is, is clearly talking about dates and minutes and things like that.
There are, but there's a lot more to the OMA than that. A member of a board, an appointed member or an elected member of any board, of any government body, can, can commit an OMA violation. And it isn't just OMA violations. Remember, it's OMA violations, misses consecutive meetings, or engages in misconduct, it's all of the things that are possible for creating removal of anyone on the board. So, we, we don't make a distinction by going, you know, just officer or just member. It's officer or member. Anybody who's on the board, if they create one of these violations, they could be removed. By removing the words "or member," now only officers could ever be removed, and members, there's now no mechanism for removal of them.
Why, I mean, they're, they're all volunteers. I mean, I mean, if we're gonna, if we're gonna hold, if we're gonna say that, you know, we've got, you know, 10 volunteers going here, and if somebody had not, was not able to, to make, you know, some meetings, I mean, that's, but these are volunteers. Why would we treat volunteers this way?
So, wait, volunteers or people who are actually appointed to the board? Is there a distinction, or is in your mind?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, volunteers is not what this applies to, but people who are appointed to the board.
Well, the membership, membership is vol, they're volunteers. They're not getting paid for any of this.
Are they sitting on the board and voting, making decisions?
No, they're, any, any, way it's always been, for, since I, I've put on three of them, since, you know, 2005, it's always been whoever shows up gets, you know, we, we talk about things. We look, we, any volunteer that comes, there's going to be some issues, you know, with, with the whole thing with, with who wants to be, you know, actually become official member or whatever. But volunteers can come to our meeting at any time they want.
Of course. But this is where, this is where we have to make a distinction. People who are just volunteers, they are not subject to these bylaws. They are not subject to the rules of the OMA. They are technically members of the public. If they volunteer their time, that's great, and that's wonderful, and we need to make a distinction between.
Then I get, I don't have a problem, I guess I wouldn't have a problem putting, leaving, putting members back in there.
I know.
I, I don't, I don't agree with it totally, because I don't think we'll get any members then.
Well, hold on, let's clarify. You, you know this very well. People who are elected or appointed to sit on a board, right, and are in control of, 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 of a government entity, and they're in control of taxpayer funds and vote.
But wait a minute, these are not taxpayer funds. Let's get that straight right now.
So.
There was not a dime of taxpayer money that goes into this.
Let me, let me clarify. Well, so.
All donations, all donations and money that the homecoming committee has earned over the past three homecomings, that's where this $20,000 comes from.
That's not the only source.
Yes, it is.
Other than the, other than the garage sales that go into it and interest.
Right, right. So, so permit fees, right? We have permit fees included in it. That's, that's what it is. It's a garage sale permit.
Okay.
It's permit fees, right? So, but my point is, no matter, no matter what, it's still government funds, sitting in a, in a village government bank account. It's government funds. And I'm just saying, we both know that there are rules that come along with sitting on a board that votes on stuff like that. And this is, this is part of the.
You're really trying to make more, this more difficult than it really is.
No, I'm trying to make a distinction between when we remove the word members, it's, it's.
I said, let's go ahead and put members back in there.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's fine, but, okay?
Okay. Okay. Moving on down to article three, that's, that's an error down there, says meeting notices must be posted the last 18 hours in advance. It's only for meetings for special meetings or rescheduled regular meetings. So, we've taken that out, but we've made some changes in there that, you know, talks about special meetings and rescheduled regular meetings that need 18 hours in advance. And then, the, where the, we made the change, and, and this is, I'm sure you're going to have some comments on this, all regular and special meetings shall take place at the village hall, and shall be recorded and earned, and live streamed in the public. This is one that, that we would like to change completely, because we would like to have the, the meetings here at the village hall, but unless we are given, you know, access in the evening, it's not going to be able to, to happen. And we really, because we've got a lot of, you know, volunteers here again, that do not want to be recorded, or, you know, have their, their picture online or anything else because of our social media that takes place in this town, that everybody gets, you know, ripped wide open here from that. So, we would like to have it so that, you know, all meetings will be publicly announced in compliance with the OMA standards, with notices posted in prominent locations and online, and that all should take place at the village hall or such location as designated by the committee. We would like to be able, unless, this could change if we either, we have access, you know, after, after hours for the, this hall. We've always, in the past, the three that I've put on, or been chairman of, are the village manager and also our clerk treasurer, has always been a part of our committee. So, we really haven't had any, any issues with that of getting into the building. So, I guess that could change if we have some access to this building after hours, because we, there's no way that we can meet, you know, prior to 5:00 in the afternoon.
And I have no problem with the, the, the access, that it's the, it's the live streaming that's the issue. I mean, we, we require all of our boards to adopt our social media.
The park board?
The, the park board is not solely our board. And I think you know very well that, that's the only one that we have any involvement in that is not. I mean, even, even the township board now does the same thing, live streams and records. It's, it's, it's why we instituted this. You know, transparency and appropriate compliance was at the core of reconstitution of this board.
A homecoming, setting, setting a homecoming is, is not a lot of stuff that people are going to be interested in.
Well, I certainly would like to know what happened at the last meeting, but I can't watch and tell you what happened.
Well, you know, where have you been for the last 10 years? When we put 2015 on, nobody cared about then.
So.
So, now all of a sudden, everybody's going to care about a homecoming, how we set it up.
So, you're taking the position that whether or not we are transparent, and whether or not we're going to inform the public as a matter of where we were 10 years ago?
The meetings, the meetings will be open to the public. We, we have no problem with meeting.
I understand that, but just like you said, sometimes people aren't going to be able to attend at certain times. So, what's the problem with them being able to see and hear what was discussed?
Who would be able to film the video?
Well, we can make available the access for, as we've already discussed with our clerk treasurer, she's more than willing to make sure that you have access to it, just like she attempted to for the last one.
That, that could be, you know.
During how?
That, that could be an issue that, that we, you know, could be a problem with, with our, with our group so far. I mean, because there are people that don't want to do anything if they're going to be videoed, or, and they, they have a lot of, you know, talents, and, but people just don't. They're, and they're here again. They're all volunteers. We're not a paid board, we're not an elected board, we're, you know, appointed to do a job as a, you know, us, the officers are.
This is the only village board that's elected? All the other village boards are all volunteers, and every one of them are live streamed?
Yeah, but they, they include board members. I mean, like, even the park board has, you know, Mindy's on the park board, he's representative from the village, and, you know, the township has theirs. This board is not. There's not a single, you know, as of yet anyway, unless when are you going to volunteer, you know, to be, be a part of this?
But that's not really the point. The point is, is that what we want is, we want transparency to the public, we want the ability, you know, for, for, to make sure we have appropriate compliance, and we can't see or hear what happens at the meeting without attending in person each time.
Or reading, or reading the minutes, or reading the minutes.
Okay. So, you're telling me that the minutes that we were given reflect the entire meeting of what took place?
Yes, yes.
That's interesting. How long did your meeting last?
An hour.
And so, that one paragraph is supposed to tell me everything that was discussed in an hour?
90% of it was stored over the bylaws.
But so, this is the point, right now, right now, Mr. Bowman is having to explain the spirit and intent behind all of these requested changes, where we could have listened to the deliberation and understood that point without this even being necessary, if we were actually transparent and showed what took place, what was discussed, what were your thoughts, what was the process, what was the deliberation about? We would know if we were willing to share, but we're instead saying, no, we're not willing to share, we're not willing to let you know what we discussed, or what, or how, or why, or what our thoughts were, the concerns were. It's the whole point, just to keep you watching.
Let's, let's leave, let's leave that as, as a, an item that we do not agree on right now.
Okay.
Okay, just, let's, let's go through them first, because see, see how much we can agree on it, how much we.
Fair enough.
You know, see if there's any common, commonality at all through here. Moving on to the financial management, in there, it said that any single expenditure or cumulative expenditures within a fiscal year exceeding 10% of the committee's total approved budget must be received prior, must receive prior approval from village council. There is no way that we can put that in there that way, because there's, that doesn't let us spend anything without council being involved in it, and you meet twice a month, and there's lots of things that we have to be able to spend our money for, like, you know, today, and, or commit to it today, and when it's not going to happen for, for months. That would just tie our hands completely. Don't have a problem with the budget, but a budget is a budget, we have to live within the budget. So, I would hope that the council would give us the, the opportunity to work within the budget ourselves, without having to bring every, each and everything that we do here to get it approved. Because if we said, gee, we wanted to do this, we bring it here, and you said, no, we don't want that, here again, then if that's going to happen, then you might as well, you know, put it on from the council point, the point of view, so.
I only have a question. Is it, is it, I think the cumulative expenditures certainly meets what you're getting at, or you wouldn't be able to do?
No, anything. Say we got a $20,000 budget, if something's over 200 or $2,000, we can't, we can't approve it without council approval.
Is that common to have, to have a, a single expenditure that's?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Can you, I'm just curious, if I'm asking, is, what, what, can you give me an example of what, like, a single?
Well, if you, if you have an entertainment tent, you know, with, with beverages and so on and so forth, then you've got a band involved in there, and that's over $2,000 right by itself.
Okay.
And I guess, you know, if we've got a budget which you've approved, normally, in all the different committees that I've ever sat on, you know, we, we approve a, a budget, and then as long as the, the manager stays within that budget, then we don't have an issue. If we have to go outside the budget, we've got to raise the funds, and then obviously we would come back and, and change the, the budget as well.
Mr. President? I'd just like to throw a comment in here, that Mr. Bowman has said it exactly correctly, that if a budget is set, the manager or the board has to come back for approval, something that's 10% of the value, to say $2,000, would be a pretty significant expenditure. That's a very common practice that everyone is familiar with. So, let's say the entertainment wanted to sign an agreement, they would tell them, yes, we're going to reserve that day, we'll approve your contract and get it back to you in a week or two weeks. That's a very common practice, and there would be no manager to oversee that. I have a spending limit, we, we're all used to that. So, that item, I just wanted to comment on, since I heard it.
Okay. Other questions on that?
Yeah, just, coming back to what you said, yeah, we do have some tertiary funds that go into it, but again, as Mr. Bowman did say, there, most of their funds are, are fundraising raised.
Well, the problem is, we don't have financial reporting to actually know that. We're told that, but we don't have any financial reporting that gives us any idea of what it actually constitutes what.
We would definitely have that in the history, in the history.
But we don't, that's what I'm saying.
Well, that's.
And I'm, I'm taking it at word, I'm just saying, we don't actually know that, because there's no.
There is, there is not a dime, there's not a dime of village council money that goes into this.
But they're spending, and expenditures are reported through you, correct?
Yes.
So, if there was any discretion, if there was any discretion or anything going on, we would know anyways, right?
Correct.
So, if it's mostly voluntary funds, if it's mostly voluntary funds, and we do have a protection against it, why not give them the financial freedom to do it?
Especially with a budget. I, I mean, I, I don't disagree with this. It makes sense, especially if we have a budget.
I'm, I'm just, I'm just saying on that point, I don't, I, I could, I don't mind removing that.
Okay, right, if we have a budget and we, and we have financial reporting, it makes sense.
Okay, good, good. Reached agreement on something. Moving on further down the page in article five, section two, you talk about subcommittees. We really don't operate with, with subcommittees like that. There's, there's not a, not an official, you know, subcommittee that, that's appointed to do anything. So, I've, you know, crossed, crossed that out, but I did put in there, in case, subcommittees may be established as needed, subject to council approval, because we, we would have no plans to, to even use a subcommittee at this point in time.
Okay, I, that's the part where I'm confused. So, just for clarification, in, in trying to come up with that, that's, this, this was on the basis of, of me meeting with Ms. Alfonse and Ms. Poyanski, and trying to understand the different events, and I was trying, I was under the impression that there were essentially subcommittees that handled different events. So, what you're saying is, the, the board itself is making the decisions as to every single one of these events? You don't break it off to the point where you have?
There's, there's a person that, like, you know, Paula and, and Tracy have always done, you know, been responsible, we'll say, for the parade, but it's not really a committee. They bring, everything comes back to the, to the, to the committee itself when they make the final decision.
Sounds like a lot, like it's delegated to a subcommittee that comes back and makes the whole board down.
It's not a subcommittee.
It's, it's, I'm just saying, in practical application, it's getting pretty close. It, so, what you're saying is, you are delegating that to specific members of the board, right, to have them go and figure out those details and come back and present it to your, to your homecoming committee?
They would, they would not be, you know, they would just be contacting folks to try to see for the parades and things like that, and then, you know, report back of, these are the people that I've contacted, and, you know, who do we want to, you know, officially go, go through with? So, I mean, it's not something, it's not an official subcommittee where anybody's appointed anybody, they volunteered to do these things.
Well, familiar with the fact that everybody's volunteering to do it. What I'm saying is, is, so, but you, you're not delegating any decision-making authority to them, you're just gathering information.
Right, they come back for recommendations.
Right. So, which brings me back to that original question of, so, the, the homecoming committee itself is the one making all final decisions on every single event, every single detail?
It's been that way in the past.
Well, that was my misunderstanding with what we were discussing, so that's why I'm asking, is just to make sure. So, there, there is no delegation of anybody else, it's literally.
If something happens where we need one, then obviously we'd be, come through and appoint a subcommittee, but at this point in time, no. I mean, and this is, you know, we've got to look at this for years in advance. I mean, it's not just, you know, the four of us that are at this right now. I mean, there's going to be, you know, I'm not going to be doing this forever, that's for sure.
Well, I, I understand, which is why I thought that it would get delegated to different groups.
If they want to do subcommittees, then they can, you know, it's still in there. So, it hasn't gone anywhere, it's still there if they need it.
Just to clarify, so, we're going to leave that, so, that section two, subcommittee's section in?
No, the.
Or just change it to the, the corrected or the proposed, just A. I guess the reason I'm asking is, if you don't have subcommittees, or don't intend to have subcommittees, then whether it's there or not doesn't really play today.
He's saying he's leaving the door open for the future if anybody wants it, he's leaving the language of, "Subcommittees maybe establishes as needed, subject to village council approval", but he's not giving all the rest of the very detailed specifics, he's just leaving the door open for the future.
What happens if somebody else takes this over and says, you know what, I want to have a committee, I only have, want to have two people on it. This says you have three candidates, or three members. I mean, why be so specific about it at this point in time when it's not really something?
Right, it's, it's reasonable. You don't actually use it now, you don't need all the language, but leaving the door[1756.53] but leaving the door open for the future is reasonable.
Yep. And then naming the subcommittees, obviously, that would go right along with it because we, you know, including fundraising, events, parade, queen, and school, you know, reunion, so that's all been taken care of with Section Two, the redo of Section Two. Section Five, their parade selection process, grand marshals and featured parade participants shall be nominated, I changed that, it says may, because we don't always have a grand marshal.
I was going to ask, if not, because you changed shall to may, I was going, well, then who? If it's not, if it's not the, your committee that nominates and approves and votes on it, I was going, well, then who? Because it says may, then I'm going, well, that leaves the door open to, it may be somebody else, and that's, I was going, well, then who's going to do it? What you're saying is, there may not even be a grand marshal at all.
Correct.
I would just like a different wording to achieve the same goal then, if that's the point, could we do something along the lines of, if there is a grand marshal, it shall be, but I don't want to leave the door open to somebody other than your committee gets to nominate and select-
It says that, grand marshals and featured parade participants-
May.
May be, may be nominated and approved by the, oh, I see what you're saying, I-
Maybe not, maybe somebody else gets to pick. My whole point is, is I left it as shall, what you're saying though is, the reason why you wanted may is because sometimes there isn't a grand marshal, right? So how about if there is to be a grand marshal, it shall be selected by the homecoming committee? I want the selection to be your choice and not anyone else's, that's the point.
I'll change it.
Okay, I just, I just want it to be in your control, I didn't like that you took it out of your own control, I understand what your point was.
I hadn't planned on taking it out of our control, I just said that, you know, that it would be, would be, that we may have a grand marshal.
This is why I didn't take fault, just to make sure, we did skip over though, can I ask you to go back one section, you skipped over to Section Three.
Oh, no, we can't go backwards.
You skipped over to Section Three.
I asked to learn more questions, you said, no, where?
You struck a very scary word in Section Three, you struck insurance in the section right above that, what, can I ask why you struck insurance?
We've always been under the, the village's insurance policy, and it also, if you read on here further, it talks about, that's one of the duties of the village managers, is to check on the insurance and everything too, so he's listed in here as too. So, but we've never, we've never, in the three that I've put on, we've never, ever done that.
I'm not.
Never.
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not saying I want you to get your own insurance, it's not what I'm getting at. I want you to make sure that you have secured insurance for your specific events, because often we need to get certain disclaimers, or we need to get-
But isn't that, down in Section Four, the committee shall coordinate with the village manager to ensure adequate liability insurance coverage for all events, liability waivers shall be required for all participants and vendors, which we do that now, but that's where our village manager is going to make sure that there's adequate insurance.
Satisfactory for that issue, because this one is, leaves you still with permits and safety measures, and since that other language already covers the insurance and making sure we cover it, I think it's probably redundant to keep anything in there for it now, so, I agree with you, it makes sense.
Hey, moving on. And certainly, the changes that we're recommending, sounds like there's, you know, some of them that we've agreed to, that we could agree to.
I know there's going to be some I agree to, and some that I'm going to have an issue with.
Where's, council want to go from here?
Your next one was, was under Article Six, Section One A, you removed the conflict of interest stuff, I'm confused about why we would do that, because that's, that's a provision in literally everything we do.
It's a repeat sentence.
What's that?
Read the sentence before it.
Oh, is it redundant? I didn't even know it was that twice.
It said it twice.
I read only what you read, mine, my apologies, so, never mind, I'm good.
I thought I had it in there, I was going to say, wait a minute here.
Yep. I don't know that, if we were to do this, I don't know that we would change the date just, just logistically, because in order to essentially change the date, like the redline would indicate at the bottom, that would be to once again disband and dissolve these bylaws into reinstitute new bylaws right from the beginning, instead of amend them. We would be amending instead of starting all over from scratch again, I mean, that's, it's literally right underneath the section that allows us to amend it, so we could just amend to make potential changes, so that would be my only other suggestion, is just, I don't think we need to throw out the whole thing and start all over, we could just make amendments as council sees fit.
That's what we were hoping you'd do with the direct, you know, because that, the bylaws can be amended by, directly by village council at their discretion, so that's why we're bringing it here.
And I don't have a problem with this one for Twenty-Six, because I know it's impossible, but Section, Article Five, Section B, we did not discuss, it's the comprehensive plan a year before, a year before homecoming. That one was implemented for the five-year plan, so village council is aware of it, so I would ask that if we come to agreement on these changes, that that is brought back into the original bylaws, and we grant an exception for Twenty-Six.
Right, I'm not interested in any way of modifying or removing that, we agree that we said-
Well, they had it removed and we have not discussed it.
What I'm saying is, my position on that is, we are always capable of granting an exception for less than that, given the, given the concerns, but we want to set that as the baseline standard going forward always, and if the circumstances warrant it, we can waive that.
Can I ask what you talk, when you talk about a comprehensive event plan, this is a year in advance, we usually don't even start until about a year, so it's, say that, say we were going to put this on, you know, next October, we might be starting like right now, and we wouldn't have a, what I would call a comprehensive, like we know we're going to have this, we're going to have, you know, this band or this float or whatever, we're not going to have any of that information a year in advance.
But a year out, you should have, it's going to be on this date, it's going to be-
That's what we need.
Yeah, that, that we can, that we can, I have no problem with that, but what's a comprehensive event plan?
So, but I think we're, so, not considering Twenty-Two- Six, so, if the next one is Twenty-Thirty, just because we're staying with simple math for me, Twenty-Thirty-One, five more years out, right, the board that is sitting here today is good until the next one, Twenty-Thirty, right? So we're saying-
But we're planning one for Twenty-Two- Six.
Just said, not talking about that one, thinking about the context of one year out, we're saying, we'd like to see a plan earlier than one year before the event, so in Twenty-Two- Eight and a Half, or before Twenty-Two-Nine, of the date that it's going to happen in Twenty-Thirty. So all we're saying is, the board should get back to get-
Give me an example of what you would want in this plan.
Take, take this year's plan, take Twenty-Two- Six plan, cut it, paste it, put the dates to the correct dates when you're going to have it, we're going to have these bands, these parades, but-
We wouldn't know that, we wouldn't have that a year in advance.
Not names, not names of bands, but you're going to have events, these events, we think our budget's going to be about this much, this is the kind of fundraising we are going to do, this is where we're going to be short or long, and that way, a year or eighteen months before, you come and say, here's what our current plan is for Twenty-Thirty, does that make sense? Yes, it makes sense.
This says in here, you know, comprehensive, that's what, that word-
We're getting caught up on the word comprehensive. So, just so we're clear, I spent multiple hours with Ms. Alfonso and Ms. Pwinski trying to get a concept of what it takes them to plan it, you, we spent, what, two plus hours discussing all the details of what it takes you to, to put it together, and you said it typically takes you fourteen months to plan it.
Okay.
So that was the concept, and what I'm getting at here is, when I say comprehensive, it is exactly what he indicates. I asked, what are the events? So many, it was too many to list, go and look at some of the previous things, you gave me lots of examples, we want-
As long as you don't want to know who.
Right, I'm not saying you have to tell me what band, but you want to have a band, and you want to have a parade, and you want to have the Cutest Baby Contest, and you want to have the spaghetti dinner, and you want to, we want a comprehensive plan of everything that you want to do, but we know you don't have all the details, yeah. We want you to spell out the list in the itinerary of what you do know you intend to do, and obviously-
The word comprehensive got me, so that was, you know, I understand what you're looking for now, I just would, still wouldn't call it a comprehensive plan, I would just call it an event plan, you know, and go move forward, but that's fine.
So we're all in agreement to reinsert that and ask for an exception for Twenty-Two- Six, correct?
We are.
So the two low-hanging fruits, the date language and the videotaping?
So I, I can understand sensitivity towards videotaping, and if we can't do it in this location, that makes logistics pretty difficult, so that's one area where I feel like I could compromise on.
I just wholeheartedly disagree, we've already been accused of OMA violations in this particular context, and it's, it would break the pattern of what we do with every single other board, you know, we need, we need the ability of oversight, and we know that we can't attend every meeting, I think we should be able to watch it, I think the rest of the community should be able to watch it, it's how we get informed, we do the same thing for our planning and volunteer meetings with the Heritage Festival, village-wide, we record everything we do, with the exception of Park Board, and that's solely because it's not in our control. If it was, we would, and I don't know why we would start making that exception now and then set that precedent, there's a, there's a very, very clear projected path for us to try to enforce transparency and to make everything available, and then we would be, you know, removing one of the core conditions here of reconstitution of this board, so I just, I disagree, but that's, that's my opinion, so.
Can I ask a question? If, we do not, in the past, we've never had a problem, because we've always had the village manager and the clerk on our board. After hours, if we want to meet, and I'm serious, eight o'clock at night, who's going to open the doors, and who's going to be here to set up the video machine? Because I personally don't want to take, I don't want to take responsibility for equipment, I know how that equipment goes bad, I do not want to be responsible for turning the van, working with it, whatever. So who within the village is going to be here if we set up a meeting? And that's our problem, I'll be very honest with you, we play pickleball, we talk amongst us in that, I mean, we, there's four of us, so if we can get together here or there, it would just make it so much easier. Two o'clock on Monday afternoon, you don't know how hard it was to do that, and it was only a certain amount of time, because I had to go pick up grandhams, and everybody's scheduled, I get it, you guys, but you guys have chosen your board, and you've accepted that you have these meetings, we don't have a set date, so I just want to know, is somebody going to be here? Do we call and say, hey, we want to have a meeting Tuesday night at seven thirty or eight o'clock? How do we get in, and who's going to set up the video machine?
You have to notify the village when you want to have one anyways, because they have to publicly post it anyways, so that's, you're going to do that regardless, if you have a meeting without doing that, you will be in violation of OMA, so you have to do that anyway, you have to make, right, so if you're going to already let the village know, and make sure that they are aware that there is going to be a meeting, and they're going to be the ones responsible for doing the public posting, they are also going to make sure that one of their employees is here to make sure that the live streaming is taken care of. My point is, is, OMA compliance, 100% of the time, compliance with what our standard requirements are, 100% of the time, zero exceptions. That's how we get in trouble, and that's how we're going to end up getting fined, I'm not okay with that.
So for four of us, it's okay though if we just sit around one table, we don't have to sit six feet apart.
Yeah, that's, yes, correct, no, you don't have to each sit at a specific seat, it's more that, the doors are open, it is publicly posted, you keep minutes.
But the sound has to be on.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so, so just historically, we're here because there was issues with the last committee that caused us to be here.
Yeah.
This committee has already broken this agreement by putting on our silent movie on YouTube.
And I wasn't aware that there was going to be a problem until that moment, when we entered the building, because of a person that had an issue, and we needed to get things done, so we had to open doors, we had, you know, we were sitting here, and then in my understanding, Dale come in and turned it on.
No, he didn't turn it on.
He, he and Kim, he and Kim both came in and told you multiple times that you guys were in violation of the bylaws, and the sound never got turned on.
He come in once.
Okay, let's be clear, you read the bylaws, the bylaws say you have to do it?
Yeah.
You intentionally didn't do it.
Yes.
Okay, those are the facts, what we're saying is, going forward, we can't do that.
We can't tolerate that any further.
That it just, we want transparency, and we know that this, this board and the way that it operated previously made it an easy target, and we are eliminating making you an easy target by doing this. Full transparency, full reporting, full requirements like any other government board, whether it's township, village, city, doesn't matter, all government boards have to operate under these types of rules.
As long as you guys are opening the doors and taking care of that, no problem.
Which?
Yeah, what does being on tape-
It's not, that's a bylaw requirement, not an OMA requirement, we want OMA requirements, those are different, the transparency issue and the recording issue, that is a choice of this board and what we've instituted for nearly a decade now of recording and live streaming.
Now, this board's been almost twenty years this board is recording.
Well, I meant the live stream.
Yeah, you're right.
Yes, we've been recording and had them on cable before that, but my point is, is we've been for close to a decade trying to livestream all board meetings of any village apparatus to do that, just village-wide. Would I be against it?
By voice?
No, a thousand percent I'm against it, it's, yeah, I want it to be transparent across the board.
You've expressed your concern, we've heard from Mindy, can we, what's the other board members say? I mean, I mean, let's, let's, I don't know how to vote on it, but let's take a poll or something here, I mean, if it's, if you're the only one, then maybe we've got some consideration here, so let's, let's at least see what they've got.
I have one suggestion also though, what if we just did voices, you just want to hear us? What if the faces weren't shown? I mean, if somebody's got some issues going on, and it's been reported to the police, I'll be very honest, my vehicle's been vandalized a lot, and recently, once again, so why do we have to have our face up there, why can't we just have our voices, if you just want to hear, I'm just suggesting. Okay, what's everybody thinking?
I was very disappointed that I couldn't hear what was going on, I couldn't attend the meeting, and I tried, I didn't know that there wasn't any voice at the time, and then I was told later on, it's, you know, I thought maybe there might have been a problem with the recording.
But if there were voices, you'd be okay without video?
Well, I wanted to hear really what was going on, I've never been involved in anything like that before, and I was very curious, so I really wanted to know what, what people, what was being said, and, and also who was saying it, you know, so I can put voice with faces.
Yeah, I would also appreciate a recording, I guess I'm open to, like, no, no video, I understand some members might have a, you know, other personal issues going on, but yeah, I share the same opinion, like, I go back and I listen to other meetings that I can't attend to just get an understanding, so definitely would be helpful to have, at least have audio.
Wouldn't be opposed to just audio.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
I said I wouldn't be opposed to just audio, it'd be nice to have audio and video, but I do understand that we don't have a whole bunch of Gen Z volunteers out here who will have social media contracts with whoever, and want their face plastered all over social media and the internet. How to make things work, at least in the current term, you know, it would be nice though to be able to hear who's, who's saying what.
I would agree too, I think voices is fine.
I will ask Kim, can we do video, sound only?
I was, I was hoping I could figure that out before he got there.
From what I remember, what I remember about the system, it, I'm not sure that, I guess we'd have to just work on that.
I don't know if it could be-
We still turn the camera on.
Right, I would have to, I would have to test that theory, but, worst case, we can record it and upload- record it and upload it later.
Right, so it won't be livestreamed?
Correct.
Which would get away from the way that we're normally.
Right.
If we set off camera.
I think it, I think you can, if you don't turn the camera.
Yeah.
I think it can be done.
Yeah, I think you're correct.
But I, we, we want to try that. So that. Okay, is that in your, your mind, does that sort of help that one or we've, we've got sound?
Better consensus with council that they're due voice only if it's.
We wouldn't say consensus because I, I don't know that we are, we are, we are in agreement, but if they might have a majority.
Consensus is what?
That's, that's, that's not the definition of consensus, but you do maybe have a majority. But I mean, regardless, we're, we're not voting at this point. We're discussing, we're not allowed to vote. It's open discussion. So it, it waits, it's, we have to review all of it and vote later. But I think we've gone, come a long way on certain issues.
And as part of the discussion, I guess the, the real question is, is it technologically feasible at this point? We need to find out.
When she checks, you will not be allowed to live. They will not let you livestream with no camera. You can upload an audio recording only later, but they don't let you livestream when you turn the camera off. On camera is part of the requirement.
You are correct. You are correct.
Oh, I.
With YouTube, it will not, if both the camera and the microphone are not on, you cannot livestream.
So what I'm saying is we will start treating this different than treating everything else we do.
Was that not on YouTube before? Because remember when the camera wasn't working? And this was early on when, I know when we first started with the township and we had voice but no video.
But the camera was on, I believe. It just was malfunctioning.
Okay. I just remember there wasn't any video.
Right, right, right. But I, I, I think you're right.
Got all sorts of questions about that.
Because it'll say no microphone or no video.
And it won't, it won't allow you to start streaming.
And it won't let you.
Right. They're not letting you take up bandwidth when you're not actually using this.
So if we said, if we said all regular and special meetings shall take place at village hall and shall be recorded for the public? Is that?
You could always point, if we wanted to do audio only, you could always point the camera up or away.
Or put a sign in front of the camera.
Or just not move the camera and it, it, only is over here and we sit over here.
It wants to have an image. So if it just said the name of the meeting and the date.
So if we change, if we add that back in there, that about being, that shall be recorded for the public? Is that, would that be acceptable? Kim, are you going to change these or am I?
So are we expected that we're going to have people announce who they are before they speak so that we'll know who's speaking? If we're not going to be able to put video to, to audio, then we're supposed to have people announce who they are before they speak for this recording? Otherwise, we just, we just have random voices that we don't know who they belong to.
It's already difficult for me when I watch the videos to say who's talking, even when the video.
Right. At least now you can zoom in and at least have an idea who's speaking.
But the way they were sitting last time, it would, it's almost the same effect of not being on. Because you had two people who, who backed the wall anyways.
Sure, which we have with audience members regularly when they, when they say something. But for the board at least, if the board is on camera and you can see when they speak and see who's speaking. If you're watching this video right now, you could zoom in and you could see that it's me and, and not Mr. Miller, for example.
But they've, but they've already been, but they've already been told they don't have to sit like this, that they can sit in a bunch together.
She said, can we sit at one table? See, still be able to sit at one table. But again, I, we're getting to the point where a, a, an audio recording where you can't make the determination of who's actually speaking is kind of, I mean, is quasi-transparency? Maybe? I just, I just don't even understand why we would go to that level of setting that precedent of, of doing things so drastically differently that we require all of our other boards to do. It's, it just seems like not the right thing to do.
Initial language about having council, having the, the, change the date in case of certain variables.
I've, I've written some, I've rewritten this and let me just see if this even, we'll start some discussion here. But it said the event shall be scheduled in the second full weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday of August unless otherwise recommended by committee and approved by village council.
So, but just so we're clear, that would mean that it has to be recommended by the committee. If the village council says, wait a minute, we have a problem, it would mean that we couldn't change it without violating the bylaws unless you guys said that we could change it.
We need to have some input into changing it because it's, you know, we need to be able to, to say when it is. I mean, to have the council come through and say, no, you can't have the second weekend in August. You can do it on the first weekend in June. I mean, we've got to have some agreement to that. I mean, I think between the two of us, I mean, you know, council and, and I mean, if there's an issue, I would hope that somebody would bring us in and say, hey, you know, we've got an issue with this date. Let's, what can we work out? I mean, I, I, I wouldn't want to just say, you know, council's going to pick a date. Because especially if, you know, we've already turned in our event, our comprehensive event plan, you know, and then something comes up after that, then it's, you know, we've got to be able to make changes to it.
I mean, you understand from our perspective, it's oversight of all village operations, all functions, all.
You still have oversight.
Well, but we don't if it's based all solely on your recommendation to change it.
No, no. If, if we can't reach an agreement, if two reasonable groups can't sit down and.
We don't have those, but.
You don't have a reasonable group? Okay, I'm sorry to hear that. But, I mean, we've got to be able to do something. If you, if you came to us and said, you know what, you know, the, the, there's not going to be a thing open in, in OMA. We think we need to change this thing, you know? And, and I mean, it, it's as long as we can make the changes, if we've already got people signed up, we've got to be able to change those dates. The only thing I would say is if you wanted to do this, that we've got to have now instead of, you know, 14 months, you know, council's got to ask us or tell us in, in two years in advance or three years in advance. Because we can't, we can't just change this thing on the spur of the moment.
I agree, you can't change it on the spur of the moment.
So, but it can be changed, but let's work together on it.
I, I agree. But what, but what I'm saying is we can't predict things three years in advance, just like you can. Right? We, we, we can't. Things do come up. Like, for example, with this year, we didn't know when this construction project was going to happen. We were told it was happening this year. Now it's happening next year, completely beyond our control. We, we delayed it not happening this year because it was supposed to be the right thing. And now this construction project is going to happen next year. I'm only using this as an example. But my point is, is, right, fair enough. Maybe, right. And so my point is.
It's federal money, isn't it?
Your proposed modification is only upon your recommendation.
No, no, it's not solely. It's, it's with your approval. But, I mean, if we pick a date, if we pick a date that, that doesn't fit within council, you've been, you've got to work on these together.
Right.
Let's have a little, you know, confer, you know, something that we can agree on.
Right. So here's what I'm saying. If you're saying it's that date, you say that it's based on your recommendation, subject to our approval, right? What if you guys, what if we say we have an issue? We have a, a conflict, a problem, right? But if you don't make a recommendation, technically, we're not allowed to change it, right? That's what I'm trying to clarify. In that sense.
Now you're, you're just looking for trouble now.
I'm looking for, I'm looking for how we don't have trouble.
No, I mean, if you came to us, you know, and, and it wasn't a week before the, the event or something like that.
Agreed. So let's say it's, let's say it's, you know, 10, 11, 12 months out. We say we're going to have an issue. We have a conflict with that timeframe and we think that it needs to be changed at village council. If you guys don't, don't agree, what happens then?
It, it, the thing is, is if, if you come to us, and, and why I don't want to just leave it up to, to the village council, is because if you come to us and say, you know what, we've got somebody else that wants to have that date. I, I, that bothers me. And that, you know, but I think that if we work together on this and say, you know, with, and maybe you've got to change the terminology in here. I said recommended by, you know, a committee and approved by village council. If we want to, you know, put some different language in there, but the committee still should have a say in what the date's going to be.
I don't want to remove you having a say. I just don't want if you depend.
Then what is, suggest some language.
So what you just said, but with additional phrase afterwards, right? As recommended by the committee, it's subject to village council approval or on village council's own motion, right? Where if we have the ability.
Then if we don't agree, there's no, no reason to agree then because you'll just do, you know, the council can do what they want. And that's not, we need to work together on it.
Right? Okay. But you're back to if, if, if that is always the date and if village council thinks that it needs to change because there's something else going on, you're saying we can't change it without you first.
Because we've got it all, we would have things planned already for those things. I mean, if, I, I just, I, I mean, it just doesn't.
Let me give you an example. Tonight, I'm going to ask you guys to please, please, please approve August 15th of next year because we have certain things lined up. And as of about two weeks ago, they were still open. They may not be open. And it's, we need a date. We can't plan diddly squat without a date. And to wait longer, if we can just have that date. And that's what Paul's saying. We, we planned this and we're trying to scramble and have something in short of a year. We need a date. And for you to say that you know already that if we can have it or not, and.
What do you mean? I, I know if you can have it or not. I don't, I know how long it takes you to plan it. I know what difficulty it is. I don't know.
You guys know that if we plan it, if we set things in stone tonight and say it's August 15th, then it's set. And if we do that five years from now or four and a half years from now, then we sit down as a group and we set the date. But in your back of your mind, you already know that we're going for the second weekend in August. And if something catastrophic is, you know, happening and we cannot have it, then we switch to the weekend before or the weekend after. It's all workable. But I mean, to, to set it in black and white right now, we didn't know five years ago that COVID was going to hit. And I'm making phone calls to people and they won't commit because they don't know what's going to go on. So we do not know the future. But I mean, just to put it down as, as the future, if that's what we planned for. And then of course, a year before or when we give you our plan, then you, you set it in stone. And I, I don't understand the problem there.
Because the whole point here is that the village council is at the top of the hierarchy and we get approval of all other things similar to this. And in this situation, it's saying that we don't get that approval, that it's set in stone and, and we, we are intentionally baking in flexibility. We discussed this. We want to have the flexibility to be able to continue the event without it being so rigid that it will always be that date. You know, for example, when you bring up that people come back for homecoming and they have class reunions, which could be scheduled, not specifically on that weekend, it is possible to schedule it a different weekend, for example. We need to have flexibility so we can maintain and continue it. We've now had COVID that delayed it. Then we had a road construction project delayed it. We don't know that we'll always have the volunteers and be able to have it done in time. That rigidity of saying it will be that weekend and then village council not having the ability to modify it as needed to keep it alive, seems like a lack of foresight. And I think that we're supposed to maintain that level of oversight. That is what our job is.
Okay.
It is, it, we are, we are empowering you to put on the best event that you can, to plan and organize it, to try to give you enough time, to try to give you the resources, to try to make sure there's no OMA violations, there's no transparency issues. We're trying to give you all the tools of success. And what you're saying is, yeah, but it has to be then and only we get to decide when it gets to change, subject to your approval, but only we get to decide when it changes.
But your Heritage Festival is always, and I'm not even sure, is it the third weekend in September? And that's kind of just.
Not always, has been recently and is also subject to our approval.
And that's.
So we can say, no, it can't be that date.
It what?
We can say, no, it can't be that date. We have that ability.
If we've got funds committed and everything else, you know, and the, the, the other ones can't, you know, can't change, I mean, it, that depends on what the issue is of why, you know, what the conflict is. And I don't know how we can write all this stuff into this to, to cover, you know, every type of, of, of conflict that could possibly, you know, come up. I mean, I just, I go back to it again. Let's just work together on this. And if you want to change, if you want to change the wording.
The original language allows for that flexibility.
No, it doesn't.
You, we gave you the date. Right now, right now, we're not dictating a date at all. You can pick whatever date you want. Today for 2026, that is up to you guys.
You pick the date, subject to our approval, which is basically what you're saying right now. But you're saying you want it baked into the language, no, it will always be this date. And what we're saying is, no, you submit a comprehensive plan, you pick the date, subject to our approval. If we say, we see a problem with that.
So if we come through and say for the next 15 years, through the next three homecomings, we want to have it on August, that, that second weekend.
And you submit your plan and we don't have a conflict with it?
And then it'd be approved?
Yeah.
Well, as long as there's not a conflict with it. Right. And I don't have one right now. I'm, but I can't predict the future, which is why I'm saying.
But I'm just saying that if, if, if five years from now.
Yes.
That you come up and I can't think of what it would be because you can schedule, you know, pretty much all your repairs and things like that.
That's why we want the flexibility.
So, so the original language would allow, 2026, we know is, is going to be, you know, crazy. Pick the date right now.
August 15th.
Right? And once we agree with this, we approve it. The intent of the whole 14 months or 18 months ahead of time, you come with that comprehensive plan that includes the date you want it, which you can say is August whatever, 2030.
We've got the same thing. The, the committee is tasked with this. So.
Yeah, so.
There we go. With approval, with approval.
Yeah, so as you do, as you say, here's the comprehensive plan 18 months early. We're going to have it on this date in a year and a half. Approve it. Okay, we approve it.
Yeah, I think if.
We shouldn't have any conflicts.
Yeah, as long as we.
The language is originally written, yeah. You could come in 2027 and say, 2031, this date, the committee can come before, put it on a, an agenda, have it approved, and then that date's fixed.
Okay.
That, we can, we can do that.
I mean, that's the way the original language is, is it's, should there be a conflict? And the bigger thing isn't that you can constrain you. It's to Stephen's point, and I know we rarely agree.
Sometimes we do.
Yeah. Is, you know, we all don't know what's going to happen.
The, the thing is, in, but, you know, I really got upset about was when it says with other major village events. And when I see here an event, I'm thinking that we're going to be replaced by somebody at something else.
Yeah, I, so we could probably change the word of events.
The life movement of the word events, you know.
Because it's not intentionally around a specific, like another.
We can say with flexibility, never event conflicts, and we could just put period because a conflict could be anything. And I do understand that the events is a, is a, does not tickle your fancy, Paul. I'm okay with removing the word events, but the, the bottom line is, is just the flexibility. I mean, if you read the previous sentence, it's the committee is tasked with the planning.
I, I can, if you take out the with other major village events, then I'm good.
Right.
We're good.
Conflicts could be anything.
Then we can come through and we can give you our dates, you know, ahead of time, you know, years in advance and you're good.
Right. As long as, right. You're picking the plan, you're picking the date. We just get final approval.
That's why we're videotaping this.
That's where it comes in.
Now, what, did we, what, was there one more on that, Tim? We had, did we agree on the financial thing about the, as long as we got the budget, we're good to go?
Okay. I, I think we.
Yeah, I thought we agreed on that. Yeah.
So what, why do we ask for the date?
We have, we, we, could we, I don't know how, if you've got a, if you're able to make a motion or not, setting August 15th of 26th is the, tonight, we would like to have that if possible, just so that we can get going. I, I know this was under board discussion, but is there?
It's really, really, really.
I understand our, our president and our pro temp have a very rigid policy that they'd not like to.
If you don't, at least if we could have your word on it. Everybody says, yes, we will do that at the next meeting.
I think, I think at the next meeting, if you can turn in, well, let's remove the word comprehensive, but a plan with your date, then we'd be at least sticking to the spirit intent of the bylaws. We would then be able to review, have as a normal agenda item and vote on it. But to do so tonight, absent a plan and in violation of their very rigid. But to do so tonight, absent a plan and in violation of their very rigid policy, I don't think you'll get approval of that.
Does anybody see a problem though with, with the, with the date if we do this? I mean, because this way we can, you know, preliminarily at least say yes to some of these folks and, and get moving on this thing. Even though, you know, uh, you know, they would obviously know that it hasn't been officially approved yet, but we've had, you know, people shaking their head, yes, that, that we can go along with that.
But I, one, I don't, I'm not, I'm not gonna speak for all council. I don't particularly see an issue with that, with that date, but we need an event plan. But moreover, I, I need to clarify, you realize we, I know that you're all very concerned about the language of these bylaws. We are also not voting on these bylaws tonight, right? We've, we've, we've had discussion, we'll get another draft, we'll review them, we may have more comments, more concerns. It, it takes us two or three meetings.
We've gotta, we've gotta button them up pretty quick though.
I, I don't disagree and I'm just saying by.
Because we can't spend a dime until we get this buttoned up, so.
Right. Which is why I'm trying to make it very clear. It isn't gonna get voted on tonight. It possibly does the next one. Almost assuredly it would by the third meeting, but it takes us typically three meetings to achieve this. That's, this is what we did in going through it the first time.
Okay.
It's, it's what I'm saying is, we start an open discussion. Sometimes we vote on it at the second meeting, but more often than not, we vote on it at the third. Nothing rushed.
If, if some people see some issues, can they contact us? At least let us know that, hey, you know, we found something different we'd like to talk about. Is it possible to, you know, just to give us a heads up ahead of time? Rather than coming, you know, in two weeks and, and, well, we've got fifteen things that we've gotta talk about now.
I have zero concern with keeping you reasonably informed of where we stand. I have no problem with that. I just, again, in the essence of full transparency, I didn't wanna be misleading and making it.
I just wanna get this done as quickly as possible so we can start this process going. Because we now no longer have, you know, ten months or eleven months or whatever, you know, and we need to move on. And hopefully we can get something put together for next, for August.
We're fully, we're fully aware and fully respectful of that. At the same time, we've also gotta be conscientious of protecting the village and making sure we don't jump ship and, and not follow our process. Because when we've done that in the past, it's caused issues for everybody.
At this point in time, you know of nothing that's scheduled for August fifteenth of two thousand and twenty-six.
No, and if it was, it would have to come through us.
Okay. Well, with the exception of like, you know, projects, like our most recent downtown project that MDOT just does without our, you know. Notice approval. We don't really even know what's happening, but.
Or, or if the coffee shop has, has been on that day that we can't control.
Right, right. We can't control, you know.
But as soon as we, as soon as we get that date out to downtown, then at least, you know, people know what's going on.
I am in full agreement. This is why I pushed to get these bylaws done in the first place, get them through, get them passed and then went, where's my applications? Because I know you guys need to get going.
Well, I'll tell you, I'll be honest with you. I normally don't do, pay too much attention to the village meetings because I don't live in the village.
Paul.
And I had, I knew that you, I knew that you, because I was on the original committee that when they, when they pulled the bylaws. So I just assumed it was all, you know, I hadn't heard anything different, so, uh.
When we pulled it was with the intention of, we're gonna rewrite these bylaws, we're gonna fix this, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna write ourselves out of these problems. Make sure these problems can't happen again, so nobody can accuse us of LMA violations.
We just need to get this thing moving, so. Okay. Kim, you and I can, you know, sort of compare notes.
Yep, yep. Thank you.
Once they're, once they're done, I would want them to go through legal like they did previously, just to.
Like what?
I would like them to go through legal.
Oh.
As, as previously, just to make sure we're, we're making the necessary changes we need or.
Do they turn things around pretty quickly?
We'll, we'll try and get it expedited. We'll try and make this, we'll try and make this a priority that we can make it for you.
Appreciate it. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Open discussion, open discussion, item number two, golf cart ordinance.
Can we let the young man go?
Did you know you're a student now?
Student, are we a student now?
Yeah.
Come out. See you back there, sorry about that. Thank you, uh, Mr. Man. Golf cart ordinance.
Okay, well, I did, uh, with the assistance of Ms. Kiesler, uh, and Sergeant Rupshus, uh, draft. What we felt is an appropriate golf cart ordinance for the village. Um, I did submit a letter to council with some of the key provisions for consideration. Some of the things that we could look at setting would be a registration fee. If this ordinance is adopted, the village could set whatever yearly fee they would like to assess, if any at all. But that way we could have record of the golf carts, uh, which could also help in, whether it's an enforcement action. Or for example, to help with theft if there was something stolen, would help identify. It does set specific, uh, concerns for safety. Uh, if you look at the ordinance, it's, you must possess a Michigan driver's license, which will help with some of the confusion, I think. Once it's posted on our website, but in social media, you can't have the minor children rolling around in the golf carts anywhere. It sets hours, whether we wanna do it at a half an hour before sunset or change to an actual hard time. And the reason why we did sunset and sunrise, just due to the fact that the season changing. And, uh, I thought it was a little more appropriate than setting a hard time because it can change, you know, whether it's winter or summer. We also added, which is not in a normal golf cart ordinance, uh, for safety purposes. If your golf cart is equipped with rear seat belts, then they are required to be utilized.
I had a question, um, on the registration. Would the registration involve an inspection to ensure that the vehicle complies with the equipment requirements?
No, but we could make it a part of that.
I, I, I think I would feel more comfortable saying for registering something that, and we have requirements that they meet those requirements. And then that way, that way an officer wouldn't necessarily have to make that determination on the fly out in the field, like, oh, hey, this doesn't meet the requirement.
Well, they would still.
They could modify it, I guess.
Well, they would still do it anyway if they were to have to stop somebody, they would still have to, because that would be a reason for compliance. For example, if a golf cart's rolling down the street and there's no brake lights and the officer's following it, that's.
That's a red flag, yeah.
That's a clue in law enforcement. But initially, when the golf cart is registered, we can, if the council so desires, we could have, do a walk around before we put the registration sticker. On the driver's side of the, the vehicle.
Did anybody by any chance look at any other municipalities' golf cart ordinances on this? Because I, I know that we, we said we would turn, and I, I think we probably both forgot, but Richmond has just passed theirs. And I'm looking at Richmond's in, in, in contrast to this one. And it just kinda stood out to me like their, their only real. Equipment requirements is the red reflectors, you know, on rear visible at five hundred feet and, uh, ability to signal turns. That's it. We have a whole bunch more, which essentially requires golf carts to be equipped like low speed vehicles, which standard golf carts are not. So this is gonna require expensive modifications to a standard golf cart of anywhere between a thousand to three thousand dollars, just to make it compliant with our version of an ordinance. Or just disqualify most golf carts entirely. So while I don't necessarily have an issue with if we're gonna do an equipment inspection and how we're gonna do that, I just. The list of this equipment that's on here, it just seems like a lot in comparison to the other ones I can find. I mean, I love the safety of it, but at the same time, I'm going, but it seems like this basically is just, oh. The equivalent of exclusionary zoning where it's just, you know, we're making the requirements so high that no one will ever meet it. So yeah, you can do it, but, or unless, not unless you're gonna make several thousand dollars of modifications to a standard golf cart, otherwise you can't use it. So I just, I don't know if anyone else looked at any other municipalities of it. I was looking at Richmond's because it was what was sent to us recently that they just adopted. They have a really great old package of how they're doing it and it's, they had really limited ones.
What of Richmond?
City of Richmond.
Richmond, Michigan.
The city of Richmond, yeah. We, uh, we compared with the city of the Piers ordinance, uh, the city of New Baltimore, who, who just adopted an ordinance. And I believe there was a third, but, oh, a Richfield township. When I contacted the city of Richmond, they said they didn't have an ordinance. But that, so they must have just done it.
City of Richmond passed theirs. I haven't.
So I, I did have a couple of questions. One, if we register this vehicle, because the state will not register one of these things, it's against state law to register one of these things. Are we taking on any?
Well, my, my comment, when we talked about doing an inspection and certifying, uh, I would not want to do that. Because then we are now taking on the liability that the seatbelt is the adequate type and it's attached properly and the glass is shatterproof. And all these things by certifying, putting a sticker on the fact that it's a golf cart and getting a permit. It's like saying, yes, you have a bicycle license. That's clearly a bicycle, not checking the brakes or the tires or anything like that. So I wouldn't want us to certify the vehicles, uh, if we're gonna put a, a license on it. Just register it so that we know whose it is.
And I, I would agree, we don't wanna certify it. I, I do like your idea though, Mindy, that at least an attempt is made to make sure that the vehicle meets the letter of the ordinance. Uh, it's not, you know, something I pulled out of a farm field, threw a battery in and started driving around. The second one. Question I have is, yes, you have an operator that might be sixteen or older and have a driver's license. If that operator is driving an ORV or a vehicle. Children of a certain age and size are required to be seat belted and in car seats. Are we, I mean, a three-year-old standing on a golf cart going five miles an hour down Zott Drive between. The high school and the middle school falls out of the golf cart.
Try, try.
Headfirst.
Try a lady holding onto a toddler riding backwards on a golf cart going twenty-five down.
Yeah, I, so I guess the, the question is, is. Because a police officer is gonna have to try to enforce whatever this ordinance says. Is it okay for a unrestrained child to be running around on the golf cart on the road? Uh, I know we don't address it here and I don't know what other municipalities do, or is it a? And I guess my last question kinda ties into that. In our ORV ordinance that we're adopting, we specifically say, as does the county. If you're on the road, on the right shoulder, driving an ORV and you're in an accident, you are at fault. Unless some other very clear circumstance that the officer has to make the call on in the field. So immediately, first assumption is ORV is at fault. Are we also gonna consider that with a golf cart that's on the side of the road as part of our ordinance? You're at fault unless otherwise determined.
Car hits a golf cart, the golf cart is.
So if a car today, if a car hits an ORV going down the side of a dirt road. The ORV is at fault unless found differently.
It's the.
According to the ordinance.
The prima facie liability, which is, which is in the ORV ordinance, and we, we talked about that when we looked, reviewed it. He's not wrong. And I, 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 I would agree, you would start with that standard. But to, in connection to that directly, that was the other thing that Richmond's required. Richmond's requires proof of insurance, a minimum of three hundred thousand dollars insurance. That, that's what they require. And it, and it, it can be a ride around your homeowner's insurance policy or a renter's policy. Um, but that's another way that you cover that liability protection. Because we eliminate our liability in the ORV ordinance, not so equivalently here. And if we make the prima facie liability theirs and say you have to have the insurance coverage of the minimum of the three hundred required, that's. That's how we cover it all the way across, because I would think all of those things would be the only way to do it appropriately.
This is, oh, Mr. Kirberson has his hand up.
Yeah, he never looks at me. The, uh.
We need to get you a foul.
The vehicles are for different things, so that, the ORV, it makes perfect sense. But in, that doesn't apply to a golf cart because its primary position is on the road. Not in the gravel and in the ditch. It's, it's designed to be on a level surface, not, you know, doing those other things. Unless you get one of the jacked up ones and make it into an ORV, but.
It's also designed to be driving down, down golf greens and that on a.
Right. That's exactly what I'm saying. So you can't, that's why the ORV is supposed to be out of the way. So if it isn't, it's its fault. The golf cart, I don't see it applying the same way. It's going to be on the road. Just my comments.
I'm, I'm struggling to see how that applies. I'm trying to understand your argument. Because, right, the ORV, you would think of it as being an off-road vehicle, it's in the name. But what our ordinance is specifically only applying to when it's on the road, that's the point. That's why we're passing the ordinance, right? And so wouldn't it be the same thing with the golf cart? Is this is the context where it is applicable is when they are on our roads? Isn't that the point?
I, I, ORVs are basically able to go everywhere and on our roads.
Right.
The golf cart is going on our roads. It doesn't necessarily go everywhere. It doesn't go over curbs, you know, those sort of things. It should be on the roads. It isn't as fast, it's not as rugged, so that, to me, you, you wouldn't want to give them. I don't know if the prima facie, the fact that they are automatically at fault. I wouldn't want it to be the same because you're gonna see the golf cart on the road more than you would see an ORV. But I see what you're saying.
You, in, in both contexts, the ordinance is only applying to when they are on village, village roads. That in, in both context, I, I agree with you, ORVs could be anywhere, but when not on a village road. Our ORV ordinance is inapplicable to that situation. Am I, am I incorrect about that? Because it's, it's, it's about when it's on.
It's only when it's on the road.
Right, so.
If it's in, down in the ditch or whatever, it, it doesn't.
Down, right, so it's, the, the prima facie, it wouldn't even apply in those contexts where it is not on our roads. And that, that's what I was getting. It's like, I, I realize in practical application, you're right, they have more like terrain abilities than a golf cart. But in both circumstances, these ordinances are only actually in the context of being and operated on village streets, right? Am I misunderstanding that? I thought, I thought that was essentially the point. I think, I think the prima facie liability is harsh. It is. It's also the only way that we protect the village by passing such an ordinance. If we don't do that and we leave the determination of liability to be determined elsewhere. How can we be sure that does not fall back on us for creating the ordinance in the first place? I mean, that's, if there's another idea, I'm willing to entertain it. But I think that the reason that that prima facie liability is commonplace is because it's the only way municipalities are willing to take the risk. And allow this type of activity is, we'll allow you to do it, but only on your own liability and only when you have very significant coverage. Because we are never going to fall in the sword for you.
Because I mean. The simplest fender bender, who's got the deepest pockets? Right? That's us. They all know we have, I mean, anybody who knows anything about government knows we have insurance.
And I think in truth, while ORVs could be more dangerous because they, they obviously have higher speeds and they have a lot more capabilities. They also have more safety equipment and they also have riders who take it obviously a lot more serious. And I would say that the golf cart operators seem to be clearly presenting as a heck of a lot more lackadaisical and a lot less concerned with the safety. Simply because, well, it's just a golf cart. Nobody's gonna get hurt, right? I disagree wholeheartedly. And if we aren't as equally harsh on them as we are on ORV, I just feel like it's just leaving. A wide gap for us to, you know, get liability.
I can give you kind of a little perspective, like I have one myself, right? Uh, it's a two thousand eight. But it can fall, like literally, I can comply with everything on the sheet and I actually have liability. It costs me thirty dollars a month.
Right.
Put it on everything. So, I mean, for me, I could cover all this and most of the time, honestly, all the parts for these things. I put horns on mine, brake lights. I mean, I could do it for all of them, a couple hundred bucks. It's cheap to do.
You can, but how many people are going to feel like they got to pay somebody to do it?
But the new ones are all like this. I mean, you're spending eight, $10,000, like these new golf carts are 15 grand.
Right.
I mean, they have it all. So they have seatbelts on the new stuff, so. You know, I mean, there's a ton of them in the neighborhoods now that I see all over the place that are brand new EV. And a lot of them are having loans and they're having, and they have insurance on them. So I don't think that's a bad thing to say you have to have insurance on them. Cause I mean, I would if I have a $15,000 golf cart.
But we don't have the insurance requirement for ORVs, correct?
Correct, this, the county does not cover that.
Because we were again, we're mirroring the county and we refuse to do anything different. So if we're not doing anything different from what the county is on that. But I'm, what I'm saying is, for example, that, that, in looking at other municipalities on the golf cart, they are requiring it.
They are?
Yeah, Richmond's has a requirement of, of insurance, uh, be provided and it's minimum of 300, 300,000. And they even go as far as to say it can be on, uh, it can be a rider on your homeowner's insurance or your renter's policy.
So why would we?
Yeah, because your auto insurance will not cover it.
Why would we impose that on a golf cart, but not a four-wheeler?
Oh, I mean, I think it should be both, but then we would, then we wouldn't mirror exactly what the county says.
So I, I would say, not to get off topic, that the county ORV ordinance probably is due for an update. But in the spirit of copying exactly what the county and the township have already, the village, then.
I have to clear, I don't think we should allow it at all, but trying to make it as safe and as reasonable as possible.
Well, we still have a second reading coming where we can, we can still push on that.
Like we were saying, well, if you have a golf cart, then you need insurance that. I don't see what the difference is between that and.
I disagree with you, but.
Especially can, because they can be both, right? A golf cart can be an ORV, it sounds like from.
Don't know, no, we can, no, they can't, no.
Those jacked up ones are still not an ORV?
Because an ORV has to, there's two distinctions if you read the ORV state laws. And one is if it has rollover protection, which is a, an actual designation of how much weight and everything that it can handle.
Right.
And if it doesn't, so if you have rollover protection, you don't have to wear a helmet. If you have, don't have rollover protection, you're supposed to wear a helmet under state law.
Which in not having it would mean that you are not classified as an ORV. No golf cart can be an ORV.
Yeah, because it does not have rollover protection.
Sure.
I mean, and there's, there's other details too. It's not just, that's, that's a very good primary example of why they wouldn't be the same thing. Sure, you could make really, really significant modifications to a stock golf cart to the point where it's not a golf cart anymore. Now it's an ORV. It, it, it's possible, extremely expensive and a bad way to go about it. Cause you'd just be better off starting with an ORV in the first place, but it would be, it would not be the same thing. They, they are treated differently. This is exactly why we said, if we wanted to address this, we would have to have two separate ordinances because they are two very separate vehicles. Designed and operated differently and need to be treated differently. I have a few other concerns about it, just like I said, in comparison to it. I, I was just wondering why, why we picked 25 miles per hour, for example.
That's the standard, the three different ordinances that I saw, they would not allow golf carts on street that have a speed limit greater than 25 for safety purposes.
Okay.
The golf carts themselves can't go over 15.
Okay. So I've got, like I said, in Richmond's, it's, it's the 30, they just put it to the 30, but I think that's probably because they have more 30 mile an hour zones than we do. And I was just curious why we made that distinction. Um, and okay, so I guess it makes more sense if we have more 25 mile per hour zones, I mean.
We have very few that are not 25 within the village. Is it just Kitter?
Handicake.
But not allowed to drive.
Not allowed to be on a handicap anyway, so.
But is Kitter is on the border of the village and the township.
You've got within the village 30 and then 45? South of?
25 going south.
South of St. Clair, it's 25 until.
There's like half.
Township.
No, it's not, because it, it starts at 30 at Drakeshire, but then it goes down to 25, like halfway in the village for some reason.
So if you can get an airdrop to the certain section that you're allowed to drive it on, you can do that.
We probably would need it at least there. Like for, unless we're not going to allow it on that one little section and the section of Kitter north of East St. Clair.
You mean the section where we see people do it nearly every day anyway?
Let's get you going on the path.
You're not supposed to be on the path if people are riding all kinds of crazy stuff down the path.
That is a no motorized vehicles area.
Correct.
Hey, music in the park.
We can't walk.
Um, I was just, this is the same comments I had about the, the, the penalties in, um, the ORV ordinance. Richmond, for example, does do it on a graduated basis. First is, first offense is $50, second is, is 100, 250 for each subsequent. If we want, again, avoid and, you know, the, that and leave it up to the flexibility, we can do that. But I, especially with golf carts as opposed to ORVs, I thought graduated approach was more reasonable. But, but $500 fee seems excessive for a minor violation with a golf cart. It just does. But, I mean, again, like we discussed earlier, it wouldn't be up to our interpretation. It would be up to the judges, but again, I just, I don't know, 500 seems excessive as to the golf carts. OrVs is a little bit different in, in, in my perspective, but you know, whatever council thinks about that. I was curious how you would feel about that.
I don't mind the penalty, um, I thought the registration was a little high.
Did we set a registration?
Um, oh, did I just?
It just says golf carts must be registered, it's on page 42.
I might have, yeah, I must, I must have just thought of 500 and thought of.
I, I would concede that since this golf cart ordinance is specifically just for the Village of Belmont, a tiered approach is probably.
More reasonable, yeah. And I'm not saying it even necessarily needs to mirror that so much lower, but it, but honestly, I actually think that that's the right approach, exactly those numbers. But I, you know, I would entertain and would be agreeable to if we wanted to increase them a little bit from that. But like I said, they, they, they said that, I think it was 50, um, 100 and then 250. Um, I think that that's the right approach, but we can, we can increase that if that's what council thinks is appropriate. Uh, there are some other things that were thought of in the, in the Richmond version that I, I just thought were good ideas to at least bring up. Do we want to restrict registration to only village residents? Cause for example, in, in Richmond's, they allow for non-resident registration with like a host resident arrangement, you know? So for example, say your in-laws come and stay with you for three, four months out of the year. You know, they're not technically residents, but you know, maybe they, you know, you, you can have host resident registration. My point is, is that if we limit registration to only village residents, that might be an issue. And we might even have, for example, township folks who want to drive through the village. We, we, we need to at least think about how we want to address that situation.
How would they kind of get there? With a break left?
That is a question.
Township law that get you.
Well, if they live in Elizabeth Lane, they can get there.
Oh, cause they go through Kalinso.
I mean, you get there now, right?
I'm not trying to point any fingers here, guys, just saying. Do we want to, uh, make sure that we make that a possibility? Another one was the option, um, was for police authority to refuse or revoke registration for safety. They have a whole section on that. Um, police can temporarily suspend a registration given appropriate circumstances. Another thing that maybe we want to consider, um, council can waive registration for special events if we wanted to. If there was ever, like for example, how we waived our concerns when there was that ORV. Right, and my point is, is we, we, we've set a precedent where we might, under certain circumstances, want the ability to waive something. Um, leaving that to council approval. Um, and then there's, uh, creating, um, an explicit exception for, um, village officials, employees, contractors performing duties. With, for example, we've had that in the Heritage Festival, right? Um, are we going to expect that you're going to have to register those to be able to use them during Heritage Festival? No, we should have a specific exemption for government employees, officials performing duties on, under certain events. All of those are covered in there's, I just thought those were good things, practical, you know, operational details. Um, they also address specific passing rules, essentially, you know, can't pass between traffic lanes. They, they spell that right out. They, they were trying to be really specific about what you can and can't do. Um, they use, uh, we don't have this, so it's not applicable, but, uh, must use designated golf path carts where they exist. We obviously don't have that. Um, they did, they did cover certain parking regulations, especially for their municipal lots. For example, do we want them to start parking in our municipal lots? I don't know if that's something that we want to consider if we have parking issues now already anyway. How, where do we want them to park if they ride it downtown? Do we want them using our municipal lots or do we want them trying to figure something else out? Just saying, it's something we should figure out what we wanted to do. And, and like I said, just, you know, that what the process would be for hosting non-resident golf carts, like if we wanted to do that. So there was just a bunch of little things that I noticed were lacking in our current draft that if we wanted to address, it'd probably be a good idea to not leave that gap.
Did they also mention minimum age for passengers?
It didn't have minimum age for passengers, it's minimum age for operators. We can include minimum age for passengers if you wanted to, but, um, how do you want to address that? Have you ever carted a five-year-old? Show me your birth certificate, young man. I mean, it's, I, for operators, we typically do, for passengers, we typically don't. Um, even if we wanted to include it, I feel like that puts law enforcement in a tricky situation in trying to enforce it. Because who carries proof of the age of their children on them when they go out for, you know, a ride or a walk? I don't know that that's realistic. How would you enforce?
This is your dog picture.
That's probably why they don't have it in certain ordinances or address car seats and everything else in golf cart ordinances.
You wouldn't have a way.
They're not, yeah, I mean.
Right, so you know, if I tell you that my five-year-old is in fact eight, how can you tell the difference? Right, I mean, that makes enforcement a real issue. So I, I mean, I like the concept, I don't know how it works in practical application, but um, that, I think that's the majority of the big picture issues I had. Does anybody else have anything else they were concerned with in it or? We've called over an awful lot.
Should there be a registration fee or just free? Seems like it should be, there's going to be a lot of administrative stuff going on with that.
I think it definitely should be a fee and I, I would like, I would like administration to give us a recommendation what they think that fee should be, given that they're the ones that are going to have to go through all this to develop what kind of cost would be, so we're not doing that at all. I have no idea what that fee should be. But let's try to make it reasonable.
Is it a one-time fee or is it an annual?
I can afford a fee.
It's the only way I know registrations to work is on an annual basis. And if you, if you want to do it for multi-year, I guess you could for a discount. You, you can even do that with the state of Michigan now, right? You can do, I think you, you can do multi-year registration, I think. But the, well, the reason why I'm saying that is, but doesn't that then take away our compliance? If we let them register for multiple years, how do we know they still have insurance, for example? Annual would make more sense.
Anybody else?
Side of, uh, fee, an actual fee?
That's the registration fee, probably a recommendation.
Recommendation from, uh, village administration as to what you think that should be, given, you know, the time and the effort and the cost that would go into this, so that way it would be appropriate. I don't feel like we're in a position to make up what that fee would be.
Right? So it's the consensus that we need some more information and like, you know.
An updated review.
Update. Under open discussion still though, right? I feel like we're, we're pretty far away from.
First grade.
Oh, yeah. We're far away.
Yeah, I think we, I think this is a great start and I appreciate Chief Will bringing it forward. It's just, I think we, we covered a lot of different ground of what we like and what we don't like and what we'd still like to see.
Consensus?
Okay, before we go into closed session, Mr. Kerberson, I'm looking at you. Uh, I'll do my update quickly and ask me if you have any questions. Uh, the festival went great, this is our first meeting, so, um, everything, every report I had was excellent. From the fire department, the police, everybody that attended, that were awesome. Uh, we have new cameras in the park, so we can now look at license plates and, uh, much, much better resolution, et cetera, and the chief can look at them night and day on his cell phone. Uh, we have new millings on the parking lot for the park. Not on the DPW theoretical side, but the parking lot for the park. We are in union contract negotiations. Uh, they've restarted. Hopefully they will wrap up soon and I'll have a executive session to discuss the results of that contract at our next meeting. We are, Brian and I are meeting with the engineer who's working on the property for the, the review and analysis for the new DPW building tomorrow morning at her office. The, I've been talking with the drain commissioner quite a bit about maintaining some issues they have in town based on the large drain project they did a few years ago. He has claimed poverty. I claim, I don't care, that's not our issue. You created these problems or your predecessor didn't have to, have to be dealt with. So we're working together to come up with a reasonable, uh, cost solution and something that he doesn't have to, you know, do major repairs, but he can make it comfortable for our residents and our DPW. But these talks have been ongoing and he's been a pretty decent to work with. Uh, the computers are all ordered, uh, and several are en route to the village. Sent thank yous out after, after the festival to the police, the sheriff, the fire department. Uh, I still have to send something over to Greenies, but those are the, the groups that we interacted with. And I need to send something to EMS. But again, all, all those people were very cooperative and, and things went great. DPW has hired a new employee, so now they're, now they're back up or will be up to full staff of four on the 20th of this month. A great new candidate with a lot of experience, even though he's very young, so. Oh, and we're waiting to hear back from something you tabled, uh, the anonymous complaint form, uh, to our attorney. Have not gotten it back yet, so they've been busy on with their own union things that they're doing elsewhere. And I expect to have a draft or a response this week. So that'll be on the next, uh, agenda. And that's it.
I'm good. Director Treasur, repeat.
Yes, sir.
Councilmember Glasser. Councilmember Feldman.
Just a quick question for Mr. Kerberson. I don't know if you've had a chance to walk over that outstanding sidewalk job that MDOT did on the corner. But the question I have is, is that temporary?
Yes, it's very temporary. They used leftover to spoof out the hump from the existing sidewalk into their dirt before they actually paved. It's all, it'll all come.
Yeah, that was, yeah, flipped by the donut shop.
No, not the donut shop over by Brute, so by the. No, not the donut shop over by Roots, by the cross.
It's, it's more, more rough there.
I mean, yeah, it, it looks like somebody like had half-dried concrete. They dumped it in the hole and said, yeah, that's good enough.
And then they sprinkled some, some gravel just for good measure.
So then, uh, to add on to that, I talked to MDOT today. I got a call, uh, an email, actually, out of the blue. They have an engineer working on new signal notification for the light change for pedestrians. And they're digging into exactly how they will be installing those going forward. So they're looking for the as-bills of the streetscape, uh, project and they're hoping to have that all wrapped up soon. They're considerably ahead of schedule because they did not run into the water table that they expected. So things are going very well. And I haven't had any complaints, just so you know, about the project, so.
I just was really surprised at how bad that looked and how rough that concrete was and it was kind of.
You don't want a third color of sidewalk concrete there?
I would have been ashamed if I was the mason that left that behind. I couldn't believe it. So I was hoping you were gonna say it was temporary. I'm glad to hear that it is because it's horrible.
I got a really long list. Joking. I'm done. Go ahead.
Um, so just one more thing to add to, um, park update. On, in our meeting last month, um, we were, had reviewed, um, the ordinance, uh, specifically relative to appointment of members to the park board and realized there had been some, um, an oversight in how park board members were chosen um, and appointed by, um, township and council. And so I just want to give you the heads up that you will see, um, a member come forward and ask to be appointed by the village as, um, an official village appointee to the park board. So just want to preview that for you, so you aren't surprised when that happens.
I just had, uh, one question for Man and Jer Kerbison. Um, I can't recall if we ever got an update on the sidewalk project where we're gonna smooth out, like uneven surfaces on the sidewalk throughout the village.
Well, the, the last step in the process was getting bids and do you remember what those were like? No, they were very, very expensive, uh, well over a hundred thousand dollars. So we just hit pause to determine, after we get East and West St. Clair done, uh, exactly what we want to prioritize. And then the council will have to, I will end up bringing back to council a sidewalk plan where we decide if we're gonna special assess, if we're gonna try to do it all at once. We're gonna do quadrants, how many linear feet a year, and then plan our work and work our plan.
Okay, that's all I have.
Councilmember Miller? I mentioned bringing this up during the open discussion with the homecoming committee. Um, village staff, at some point, can we get a determination of what resources they need from the village to use and explain to them our billing system now? Because that, I don't know historically if they use any village resources like the Heritage Festival does. And if there's chargeback, it was probably not done in the past and they're gonna be wanting me to wear it for their budget.
Sure. Yeah, yeah. So, for example, they're obviously gonna need a bunch of assistance from DPW, just like the Heritage Festival would. If you're doing any type of road closure, putting out trash, all the things that DPW would do for the Heritage Festival, I would imagine would need to be done to a much larger scale for homecoming, which I'm sure was never billed to them because that wasn't a practice before. So unless we're gonna start violating our own accounting practices, then we would have to do it to them as well, which would be a very expensive budget item, which I am certain they are not aware of, so.
And that would be the same with police, you know, if they require police, you know, all that sort of.
So all of a sudden, the budget, they would think that they were gonna prepare and provide to us that would need to be approved, would need to look substantially different unless somehow.
I want to bring.
Another fund foots that bill.
Right, and I wanted to get that back to them, so it's not.
Right, yes, we should have brought that up early.
So that's what I'm to. To do by council.
Okay.
Um, the, the bridge over West St. Clair down Gordon's Hill, um, on West St. Clair, who cut the shrubs on that? Going, going, going through the drain on West St. Clair, who cut the shrubs on that? Was that the drain commissioner or was that DPW?
I think I know what you're talking about.
Going down West St. Clair, you go down.
You're to the bridge.
The, the bridge has the fence, the trees grow way over it, so like I'm like knocking, it's knocking me in the head when I ride my bike down.
Oh, okay.
They've been cut back. I was just wondering if DPW did that or drain commission.
Well, I don't know. I'll find out.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Did they throw them in the drain?
I didn't notice. I'll let you know.
I'm gonna, I guess it was DPW when they were chipping, but we'll see.
Um, do we have a motion to go in closed session?
I'll make the motion to enter into closed session in accordance with Section eight D of the Michigan Open Meetings Act, being Public Act two sixty-seven of nineteen seventy-six, to consider the purchase of real property.
Support.
Motion by Councilmember Schneider, supported by President Proton Steffler to go into closed session and state on the record, roll call.
Esser?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Powell?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Steffler?
Aye.
Feldman?
Aye.
Dyke?
Aye.
Who has a golf cart other than Wayne? Here, Pete, you don't have a golf cart?
I have a four wheeler. Doesn't run.
Why not? You're gonna fix it.
I'm working on it. And it's used to plow snow on the driveway. That's it.
Just on your private property.
That's right.